Welcome to this evening's forum to hear from the two candidates for the office of mayor of the city of Encinitas. I am Lois Martins, a member of League of Women Voters of North County San Diego, and I will be your moderator for this virtual candidates forum. I want to say a special thank you to the Cardiff Town Council who are sponsoring this evening's forum. Now, we believe that although we do miss something by not being in person, there are some advantages as well. Many more people who otherwise might not be able to attend in person will be able to view the candidates and their responses, enabling them to make a more informed decision when they fill out their ballots. Assisting me this evening will be members of the League of Women Voters of North County San Diego. Two members, Ronnie C. and Jackie Stone are our question sorters, and Jane Dunmire is serving as our timer. Jane, would you introduce yourself to our audience?
Hi, I'm Jane Dunmire, the timer. When the moderator gives you time to answer and to give your final statement, I will signal to you when you have this much time left and when you have to stop.
Thank you, Jane. I also would like to give a special acknowledgement to Nancy Telford, our media coordinator, without whom this forum couldn't be held. We have asked that candidates mute their mics except when talking, and the chat function has been disabled by Nancy so that people cannot interrupt the forum. Now, before beginning with the business at hand, I want to take a moment to say a little about League of Women Voters. Our organization was founded in 1920 when women finally, after a very lengthy struggle, won the right to vote. This year marks our 100-year anniversary, which we are celebrating virtually, not quite the way we had expected to do so. Now, our intentions of League of Women Voters are very much today the same as they were 100 years ago. The purpose is to promote active, informed citizen participation at all levels of government through education and advocacy. Now, while we cherish our historic name, for some time now, both women and men are welcome members. The League never supports or opposes any political party or any candidate for public office. We do, in some instances, take a position on a particular issue, but only after a thorough study has been completed. League of Women Voters moderates candidates' forums all across the country using a format that most people find fair, balanced, and informative. And we ask candidates to defer from any personal attacks, but rather keep to the issues. This forum is being recorded. Video-recorded streaming of this forum is limited to authorized entities only and must be shared in its entirety as per FCC regulations. Now, we ask the public to submit questions online before the forum so that our question sorters could review the questions to avoid redundancy, questions of a derogatory nature, or those not pertinent to this election. The questions have then been organized into categories of a similar nature to avoid repetition and to assure that topics of the greatest interest are addressed. Now, the candidates running for mayor of Encinitas are Catherine Blakespear and Julie Thunder. These candidates have been informed that they will each have two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for a closing statement, and one minute to respond to the questions. Our timekeeper will hold up a yellow paddle when 30 seconds remain and a red paddle when time is up. Both candidates will respond to each question. Prior to the beginning of this event, the order for speaking was determined randomly, and candidate Blakespear will go first and candidate Thunder will go second. Closing statements will be in the reverse order. So candidates, please silence your cellphones, mute yourself when not speaking, and please try to adhere to the time constraints. So now for your opening statements, and first we will hear from candidate Blakespear.
Well, greetings, and thank you. I'm Catherine Blakespear, and it has been my great honor and privilege to serve as your Encinitas mayor for the last four years. I'm running for reelection to continue our successes. During my time, we've really been on a roll. We have substantial neighborhood improvements, we have prioritized public health, and we have a safe and financially stable city. My opponent consistently attacks my leadership, saying that I'm destroying the community with overdevelopment, crime, homeless people, and mismanagement of stormwater, among other things. This is fear-mongering, and it is rooted in negativity and lies. She is playing on nostalgia, promising a return to a mythical Encinitas that never actually existed in the first place. I understand the uncertainty that we all feel in this moment, making us yearn for the good old days on multiple levels. It's an understandable feeling, but when you look around Encinitas, don't you love our city? I do. I routinely hear about how great our city is and how happy people are with the improvements that we're making. I'm from a family that's been here in Encinitas for close to 100 years. I'm fourth generation, and my kids are fifth generation. I understand the heartbeat of our city. I can feel the heartbeat of our city, and there are no simple answers to the concerns about development, traffic, homelessness, and climate change. But I tackle these problems by leading with our strengths, by keeping things in harmony, by working every day to preserve and then to enhance our beach town. And we will always be a beach town because we are right next to the beach. So as we go through this forum tonight, please think about whether you really want to dismantle the great things that we've done in Encinitas. I don't think most residents do. Thank you for being here tonight, and I would be honored to have your support for my reelection as your Encinitas mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will hear from candidate Thunder.
Well, good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, ladies, and thank you for this forum once again. Encinitas has been my home for over 30 years. My husband and I are invested in Encinitas with our money, our time, and our hearts. We raised our four daughters here and someday hope to watch them raise our grandchildren here. So you can see, I have a personal stake in keeping our town safe from crime, environmental damage, and overdevelopment. Encinitas is worth fighting for. That's why I'm running for mayor, to keep Encinitas a beach town, not a big town. Our current leadership likes to say, "We're a well-run city." Well, if that's the case, why are we tangled up in nearly 20 lawsuits, many of them a direct result of actions taken by this mayor and our council? Our leadership also likes to say, "We're one of the safest cities in America." If that's so, why did Sandag and the FBI just publish their mid-year report showing violent crime in Encinitas is up 58%, while Solana Beach and Carlsbad are down? Those of you who, excuse me, those of us who are invested in Encinitas want a different future for our town. Like those of you watching, I want safe roads for bikes and cars. I want to protect our lagoons from filthy runoff, and I want our beaches to be safe and stay safe. And like you, I want a more resident-focused city hall. As your mayor, I will place public safety first. My support for law enforcement has earned me the coveted endorsement of the Deputy Sheriff's Association. I am not anti-growth, but I want our town to grow in a more measured and managed way. Let's work together, you and I, to find affordable housing solutions that don't sacrifice the very town we've come to love. Finally, we all want to preserve the unique character of Encinitas that attracted us to live here in the first place. Thank you. I'm ready to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thunder. And now it's time for the candidates to respond to your questions. Each candidate will have one minute to respond, and since this is a forum, not a debate, extra time for rebuttal is not permitted. We provide equal time for each candidate. And so we're going to go to our first question, and we will begin with Ms. Blakespear. The first question is, "Do you believe our city housing crisis is being exacerbated by the large numbers of Airbnbs in the city, and how do you plan to control this?"
I think Airbnbs are a concern for coastal communities everywhere, and the key is compliance and enforcement. The city has a proactive approach to managing our Airbnbs, and we really want to make sure that we don't have public nuisances in our neighborhoods. So we have recently contracted with a company called Host Compliance, and they make sure that anybody who is advertising an Airbnb is actually registered with the city, which allows for accountability and follow-up, and also for them to pay the hotel tax, the TOT tax, which is 10%. And it's also, I think, worth noting that when we expanded our granny flats, which is a way to add naturally affordable housing into our existing neighborhoods, we made it so that granny flats could not be rented for less than 30 days. So this was developed, that policy was developed so that we wouldn't end up with people building in our neighborhoods for hotels, because really, we do need to be providing homes, not hotels.
Thank you. Ms. Thunder, would you respond, please?
Well, I think the recent contract that the city signed is not enough, and it's too late. There are people throughout the city that have been complaining about obnoxious Airbnb parties for months now, and now they're coming to me, a candidate for mayor. I have no connections with the city at this point, but they're coming to me for help. So the city is not enforcing its municipal code, it is not trying to help these neighbors. They're living next to homes that have massive parties with 30 or more people staying in the house. They're up late playing beer pong, and there's trash thrown all over the driveway by the next morning. I have people in Cardiff that are calling me about this, up on Neptune and in other places throughout the city. The city, the city of Encinitas, has really been remiss in taking care of this problem, and it's something I plan to address quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for the second question, and we're going to start with Ms. Thunder on this one. And this one has to do with climate. How do you plan to implement the city's climate action plan? Please give specifics, Ms. Thunder.
Well, that's a good question, considering that our climate action plan that my opponent is so proud of says on the very front cover, or actually, it's on the first page inside the front cover, quote, "An environmental initial study determined that the climate action plan would not have a significant impact on the environment," end quote. So I'm confused at why our climate action plan is celebrated so, if it's not meant to do anything to help our climate. The city of San Diego has a similar climate action plan, and a court just reeled it back, and they're going through a little crisis down there right now. But as far as Encinitas, I think we have to take care of the problems that are in our face and have been here with us for a long time. The flooding, the runoff over Beacons, the runoff into Bataquitos Lagoon, as well as that sewer line from Olivenhain to Cardiff, they need to be addressed. We have to take care of our own problems first.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Blakespear, would you respond, please?
Yes, thank you. So that first sentence that was quoted is getting at the fact that the climate action plan doesn't have to go through CEQA, which is the environmental review that development projects have to go through. And our climate action plan is really a central organizing document for the entire city and everything that we do. The current group of elected officials, including me, is committed to doing what we can to cool the climate. And make no mistake that actually addressing climate change will come from the leadership of cities, because when you look at where emissions come from, they come from the transportation sector, the waste sector, the energy sector, and those are all areas that we are tackling here in the city of Encinitas, also reducing the amount of plastic and air pollution and making sure that we are a green and clean and environmental city. I think that's a top priority, and my commitment has earned me regional awards as well as the endorsement of the Sierra Club, the League of Conservation Voters, Climate Warriors, which I'm very proud of, because I think that that's a reflection of what everybody in Encinitas wants to see, which is us to be a community that's committed to making our environment as green as possible and cooling the climate locally to the extent we can.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we proceed, I would like to request of both of our candidates that we refrain from doing, making any kind of derogatory remarks about our opponent. Just tell us what your position is and allow your opponent to say what their position is. Okay? The next one is also on climate, and we're going to start this one with Ms. Blakespear. This is a long one. So I'll start reading. Regarding climate change, do you see it necessary for all city-related public works projects to be held to the same standards as private development projects? And shouldn't all city-related public works projects be mandated to have offset mitigation requirements for the amount of pollution they create? Ms. Blakespear?
Yes, absolutely. So public projects and private projects are all subject to CEQA, the environmental review, and I don't think that there's a different analysis for public project versus private projects. We are doing a lot around the active transportation network in our city, so building bike lanes and walking paths and making it easier for people to get around outside of their cars. That's one of the main focuses of my four years in office and the rest of the Encinita City Council, and it really comes from a hunger from residents who want to be able to enjoy our city, get to the beach, get to places on either side of our city, and to see their friends, and to go to the market, and to do it outside. And so we have had a transportation network that has been primarily focused around the car, and we are changing that. And I'm really proud of all that work we're doing, and we do, we follow all of the environmental guidelines, and you could see, if we weren't doing that, we would have lawsuits and regulatory problems with our projects, and we don't. So that's a way that you know that we are actually following the rules.
Thank you. Ms. Thunder?
Well, to be clear, there are lawsuits concerning environmental problems on several projects, on several issues within the city. But as far as should the city be held to the same standards as a developer or a homeowner, I think the playing field should be 100% even. That's the most rational, logical way to run a city. Rules for everyone should be the same.
Okay, thank you. And we will go to the next question, which has to do with homelessness. What is your position on the Encinitas Safe Parking Lot for Homeless People? Ms. Thunder, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. I was very outspoken about the homeless parking lot process that brought us that lot. I said publicly, and I'll say again here, and I still feel this way, that if a homeless parking lot would be beneficial to the people who live in our town, who are living in their cars, then I would like to see the city run it. What the city did is a lot of meetings that were out of the public view to set up a lot through a grant program called the Heap Grant. Once you get heap funding, you may not discriminate by where people are from or what they're doing that may or may not be illegal. So effectively, what happened is when the city opened the safe parking lot with the two nonprofits, using state funds, they created a regional homeless safe parking lot. So our lot is considered to be used for entire North County. I don't know how many people come from other cities, but they had to use the numbers of homeless from other cities within North County in order to get acceptance for this lot.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Blakespear?
Yes, thank you. So the homeless parking lot is a real lightning rod issue, and it even motivated my opponent to run against me for mayor because of my support for it. And it's important for me to just say a couple things about it. So the parking lot is homeless prevention. This is for people who have lost their home but still have a car, and they're not yet living on the street. So we're finding a place for them to be. It's a compassionate response. I think focusing on whether this is a city lot or we take state money really is a red herring, because what we're doing is we are channeling state money, which is available for homelessness, into our solutions. And the city is never going to solve homelessness alone with our own general fund money alone. I mean, to me, this project is perfect because it's so well-run. It's run by Jewish Family Service, which is already running other homeless parking lots in this county. They are recognized with distinction as a nonprofit that does that and helps a lot of other people as well. And also, there's a state grant, so we're not using our general fund money to do it. So we have our general fund money to use on other things like law enforcement and infrastructure improvements. So this homeless parking lot was a great example of a success.
Okay, thank you. Next question also has to do with this particular topic. What are your plans for addressing the increasing number of mentally ill and drug-addicted homeless who are living on the streets and in the parks of Encinitas? Ms. Blakespear, would you begin the response?
Yes, thank you. So we need to help people, and we also need to protect the integrity of our public spaces, and both of those things come together in a homeless action plan. So we are doing a homeless action plan right now so that we can have a comprehensive approach where we look at who is homeless in our city, why are they homeless, where are the gaps? In Encinitas, we do not have a shelter. So if we are thinking about the trajectory of homelessness, where people might need mental health support, they might need substance abuse treatment, they need a place to stay that night, they also need a place to stay in six months. And so those are all different types of treatments and different interventions. So getting our arms around the entirety of the problem and then figuring out what we can do to actually move the ball and help people and protect our public spaces, that's the thing that I'm working on. And I work on that a lot. I talk to all of our regional partners about it, those at the county, those at the Regional Task Force on the homeless, those at the state, so that we could bring resources to the city of Encinitas to help us deal with homelessness.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Thunder?
Thank you. We aren't protecting our public spaces right now. So to start, I would, you enact, or pardon me, enforce the municipal code that prevents people from sleeping in their cars around our parks, in our rail corridor, and in our neighborhoods. Many of us on this call have experienced that, and it's not pleasant to have that going on near your home. We also have people camping in the new Encinitas Community Park. They literally wait till it's nearly dark, and then they move in with tents, sleeping bags, they pull all their gear out from under the bushes. So there's a lot that needs to be done here, including getting that situation under control. As far as the ones that need more help, I would look hard at solutions like Wheels for Change, Solutions for Change. There's partners out there that are doing this every day in other cities, and they're having great success with it.
Thank you. And now we're going to, now we're going to go to the next question, and we begin with Ms. Thunder. And this question has to do with Streetscape. Do you believe that being in a recession and Streetscape now projected at costing over $30 million, relying partially on loans, should be put to a vote of the people? Why or why not? And we will begin with Ms. Thunder.
Well, the projected cost of Streetscape is now $55 million, and that came from a public records request submitted to the city. So we know that is the new cost, and that absolutely has to go to a vote of the people to spend that much money. That spending that much money on one project will table several other projects, important projects, like lowering the power lines on Birmingham, the fire station in Olivenhain. There's other areas that need addressed, and I definitely would put this to a vote of the people.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Blakespear?
Yes, thank you. So Streetscape is not costed out yet. We don't even have a complete design for the entire corridor. We are starting Phase One of Streetscape, and we actually just got the bids back, and they are lower than our engineering estimate, which is excellent, because that means that we will have more money to spend on other projects and on the rest of Streetscape. So we're starting Streetscape with the El Portal undercrossing and then the beginning of the Streetscape project, which is on the south side. And it is basically a linear park along with expanded sidewalks, planting 1,000 trees, organizing parking in the rail corridor, having dedicated space for bicyclists. It will be a full improvement of a corridor that has not been improved for 70 years, and that is the basics of what a city does. So a city does things like improve the sewer system. It also improves the transportation network. And so taking something like that to a vote of the people is not what we do. You elect us to make decisions about infrastructure projects and improve things. So we are doing this in phases because we're a fiscally responsible city, and, thank you. I see my time's up.
One minute goes very quickly. Another question on same subject. Key Asia Streetscape. I assume you know what that means. Will the current small businesses along this corridor be able to afford to stay in business, or will they be pushed out by developers to allow for other businesses that will conform to the revised aesthetics of the area? Ms. Blakespear, would you begin?
Oh, I think that's referring to Streetscape and in general gentrification. And so preserving our small business community is really important. We've been working on that in this environment of COVID, helping businesses move outside into the public right-of-way, operate in our public parks, helping them in any way we can to survive, because we really want to keep our small businesses. So we're not intending to create a gentrification situation where our existing businesses need to move out. I think businesses want improved infrastructure. There's no question that when you have a nice place to be, when you have a nice sidewalk and a nice crosswalk and good parking and tree canopies, you create an environment. It's an atmosphere and an ambiance, and we have that in our downtown, and we have that in our little section of downtown Cardiff as well, and we need that in Lucadia. They deserve that. So this is a revitalization project, but it also is reinvesting into our community and into the businesses that are already there.
Thank you. Ms. Thunder, would you respond, please?
I think the small businesses in Lucadia along the 101 are definitely going to be hurt. They're going to be hurt by a year-plus of massive construction, difficulty with access of their customers. Then they're going to be hurt by the one lane in each direction. There'll be less people choosing to come that way and to drive through and to see their business. I think they'll definitely be hurt. And by the way, if any of them has a heart attack while they're working, they're going to be hurt by the ambulance having trouble getting there, because one lane in each direction is going to clog up quickly, and it's going to be tough. There's ways to give Lucadia their needed improvements. They're long overdue, they've been ignored for decades. There's ways to give them improvements without costing the city $50 million and creating an emergency health, excuse me, an emergency response problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this one, different subject. Gun shops. Would you support a preemptive policy to prohibit gun shops in Encinitas similar to what the city did in banning puppy mills in Encinitas before we had any in place? What other steps would you take to reduce the threat of gun violence? That's, and answer that in one minute, please. Good luck. And we're going to begin with Ms. Thunder.
Well, last time I looked, gun shops are legal under our constitution, and having a gun shop does not show an increase in gun violence in the town the shop is located in. And I think if it's put in a place that makes sense to the people of the town in that area, I would be fine with it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Blakespear.
Yes, I would not be fine with it. I think preventing gun violence is a top priority, and it's something that, as a local government, we should be involved in. I'm proud that we were able to pass a Safe Storage for Guns ordinance, which requires people to have their guns safely inside of a safe or locked up in another way when it's inside of their homes. And I'm always looking for ideas about how we can make our city safer when it comes to guns. I read the newspaper every day, and when another city does something like the Safe Storage Ordinance, which came from the city of San Diego, I bring it up with my city and our city manager and see if there's a way for us to evaluate it and see if it's appropriate. Of course, it has to be legal. We don't want to entangle ourselves in lawsuits that we can't win, but I think that supporting the ending of gun shows at the fairgrounds was really important, as well as the gun violence restraining orders. I went to a training on that, and that's something that our sheriff's deputies are also utilizing so that we can reduce gun violence in our community. All of those things make our community safer, and we need to be pursuing all of them.
Thank you. The next question has to do with housing. Would you consider moving the low-income housing developments to Cardiff? I see that Encinitas, Lucadia, and Olivenhain seem unfairly targeted as there are no proposed sites in Cardiff. Would you begin? Let's see, did I, Julie, did I miss you on that last one? No, I didn't.
No, I answered first and short.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Ms. Blakespear, would you respond to that, please?
Yes, thank you. So the effort is to have Yes, thank you. So the effort is to have the housing units that the city has to accommodate spread evenly throughout the city. I think there's a broad consensus that that's a good idea. But in reality, the state's regulations are so strict that we were looking for sites that were either vacant or they had to demonstrate owner interest. And those things, because we were in the middle of housing lawsuits and we were under a court order and we had two failed housing plans, it resulted in the reality that we didn't have a lot of wiggle room because our back was really against the wall. So having housing distributed throughout the city is, is really the right way to go. It, it's fair. It also allows for every community to provide housing for every income level, which is a community good. We want to have diversity. We don't want to have communities being wildly different. I think, you know, in Allevonheim, there's, there is one site. So it's not that Allevonheim is ending up with a lot more of the housing than a community like Lucadia. But, but yes, we would like to have it.
I'm going to have to stop you. Thank you. Ms. Thunder, would you respond, please?
Well, I remember when the, when Measure U was put up, I was surprised that there was so little in Cardiff. The, there's very little space in Cardiff to put any extra housing. But I would do the entire housing plan different. We could have put smaller projects in more places and there might be some smaller areas of Cardiff that could take smaller projects. And I also would have done a much higher percentage of affordable housing so we can get to our numbers quicker. It's going to take us a long time only requiring fifteen percent of developers when eighty-five percent of their projects can be market rate. High, that's why they're called high-end luxury condos. That's not what we want in Encinitas. More of that.
Okay, thank you. And our next question has to do also with housing. Again, this is a long one. The state requires our city to be in compliance with housing laws. The voters passed a proposition that has resulted in the inability for the city to have a state-compliant housing plan. How would you resolve the conflict between state and voter mandates? What would be the consequence of either ignoring the state or ignoring the voters? And we're going to begin with Ms. Thunder.
Well, you don't have to do either. When the mayor reversed our major, our Measure U vote to put forth our housing plan and then sued the residents over Measure A to table, or Prop A, to table Prop A, that, and none of that had to happen, none of it. Measure U was faulty from the beginning and what they could have done is listened to the residents that were offering ideas, listened to the member of their housing task force when they only allowed one person from the opposition, Bruce Ayers, he had lots of ideas and he wasn't listened to. That's number one. Number two, Prop A, we've shown that you can build R30 in under thirty feet tall. So I would like to go back and look at that and hold those height limits to keep our community character. Or we're going to start looking like Huntington Beach. If you haven't seen Huntington Beach recently, it'd be worth Googling Huntington Beach and taking a look what their streets look like. They're high rises and boxy, high-density buildings. That's what we're going to look like if we don't get ahold of this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Blakespear?
Yes, I support residents' right to vote and I support being in compliance with state housing laws. And those things at times are in conflict, which is what has created these year-long lawsuits over housing and our current lawsuit with the state of California over housing. So being in, inside of this and working every day to reconcile these things is something that I am involved in and fighting for. And, and it's really easy to stand on the outside and throw stones and say, oh, if you just did it this other way, it would be really easy to solve. But I think anybody who looks at the history of housing in the city of Encinitas, looks at our two failed ballot measures, looks at the fact that we've spent two million dollars on housing lawsuits, that's taxpayer money, two million. That's, that's nothing to sneeze at there. You'll see that this is a difficult situation and I am trying my very best to protect the right to vote and comply with state housing laws and protect community character. I think all of those are possible and I think we are doing them. I feel that we are doing that in the city of Encinitas.
Thank you. Now this next question has to do with mass transit. Do you use mass transit and what is your plan to improve Encinitas' mass transit? Ms. Blakespear?
Yes, I use mass transit some. I don't use it a lot. Right now, I'm not really commuting anywhere because I'm at home doing Zooms. But I would take the train and the train is amazing. It's great. The thing that we need is more frequency and we need it to run when people need it. So it's not reasonable to ask somebody to wait an hour and a half for the next train to come. And so investing in having more trains, having them run more frequently and having the tracks upgraded is something that I have been fighting for on Sandag. I'm on the regional transportation agency called Sandag. I'm in leadership as vice chair and hopefully chair next year. And I am always fighting for those investments in transit. And that's a really important thing for your leaders. You want people who are in these elected seats who care about getting places in their car safely and quickly and also on transit. And so that transit's not just for the transit dependent, but also for people who, who don't or can't afford a car or, or for climate reasons want to take it and also just because it frees up your time. It's a really pleasant experience to take the train.
Thank you. Ms. Thunder?
Well, I take the coaster all the time. I take it down to the airport. I send my daughters on it to go to the airport. I take the coaster north with my bike so that I can do the ride back down from the Oceanside Train Station. I think it's great and I think it does a really good job. It's not as full as I wish it were, but I think as, if we do add more, it'll be more popular. I'm more concerned with mass transit with the bus stops. The bus stops that are located in places that you can't even safely get to. There's two in Lucadia that you have to jaywalk across Coast Highway to get to the bus stop and there's nowhere, once you get over there, you're in the rail corridor, right next to the train tracks. There's nowhere to sit down. There's no shade. They've just been neglected for so long. So I don't think we'll ever get our mass transit up to speed if, while we, if we're ignoring things, basic things like that.
Thank you. This next question was submitted by a particular group and since it's highlighted, I assume I'm to tell you the group. It's, it's submitted by Encinitas Bike Walk. The group works to enhance the walking and biking environment throughout Encinitas. Our vision is for walking and biking to serve as a safe, convenient, healthy, and fun mode of transportation in Encinitas. How do you intend to make safe, multimodal transportation a reality in Encinitas? Give examples of, of specific projects that you have implemented or plan to implement. And we will begin Ms. Thunder on that one.
Well, I haven't implemented anything yet.
Right.
But I, I think we definitely need to take a hard look at how to bike more safely. There, I see so many people on electric bikes and they, they don't look safe to me. I see ten-year-old kids on bikes designed for their fathers and they're trying to get down the road with their surfboard balanced on the bike. So I'm really concerned about what type of access those kids have and I want to make sure it's safe for them. I do hear reports that all the bollards do not make it more safe because the cyclists can flat catch their steering wheel or their handlebars on the bollards. I am concerned about the bike lanes going in on El Camino Real and the lane diets. I would rather we did those without the bollards. I think the bollards give people a false sense of security. So I like the painted barriers and I do like, I do want to see more bike lanes for myself and for everybody to keep, especially to keep those kids on those e-bikes safe.
Thank you. Ms. Blakespear?
Well, I'm really proud of all the transportation improvements that I have championed and we've implemented since I've been in local elected office and they are substantial. So we have now in Cardiff a coastal rail trail and my opponent was the head of NO Rail Trail. That was the group she founded to fight the rail trail. We've also put in the protected bike lanes on Highway 101, which are tremendously popular. If you see the number of people using them, they're not unsafe. They, it is created the opportunity to go to the beach and to places beyond on your bicycle or walking and not getting in your car because people feel safe when they are protected. We also have a walking and biking path underneath at Santa Fe, underneath the freeway and also at Encinitas Boulevard, which is another great transportation improvement on the east-west corridor, not just north-south, but east-west. And the Lucadia Streetscape project, which I champion, is, is a mobility enhancement project. So that, that's another major improvement for people as well as the undercrossings at El Portal and then one in northern Lucadia that is planned right now. So I don't, I don't think you could see a bigger difference in the two candidates when it comes to transportation improvements. And I, and I also don't think that we could put more into that because we're all in.
Thank you. The next question, following up on that. What will you propose and enact which will make the rail trail safer for everyone and which will reduce the speeding cars on the recently narrowed streets? Ms. Blakespear, would you begin this time?
Well, one of the reasons we narrow streets is to create an environment where people slow down. So having a narrower street allows for people to feel like they need to pay closer attention and they're not just flying through our city. So, so having lower speeds is part of the Vision Zero commitment to say we don't want to have deaths or accidents between bikes and pads, pedestrians and cars. And that's one of the things the Traffic and Public Safety Commission has been working on. And, and I was on the Traffic and Public Safety Commission for three and a half years before running for local elected office, first on city council and then mayor. So I understand really deeply all of the conflicts between the different uses and the fact that it's always difficult when you change how public space is used. But I'm happy that we've been able to find great compromises that have allowed us to actualize this part of our city because people want to be outside. They want to take their kids to school on their bike or walking and we just need to build them the facility. So that is what we've been investing in and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Thunder?
Yes, I was against the rail trail and so was the mayor. She, after political pressure, she came around and
Would you please, wait a minute?
She did it to me.
Please just talk about what you would do.
Well, make sure you call her out then too, when she does it, which she just did. So I was against the rail trail. I was against paving the last sliver of open space and a wildlife corridor in Cardiff. We asked that if they are going to do it, to at least wait until we have a crossing so that we don't take away the only access, the only walking access for an entire neighborhood in Cardiff. Number two, the speeding on Santa La Joa is horrible. Though a group of us have been working with the city for a long time and frankly, we're not getting very far. We've made a couple little improvements, but those improvements came with resident suggestions. So it's very frustrating working with the city. I can tell you that, especially when you have a safety problem. And I've seen children walking on the rail trail where it gets close to Santa La Joa while their parents are distracted.
Thank you. Okay, the next one also has to do with the public safety. There is significant concern that roundabouts are less safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. Given this, why are they being considered for the Streetscape plan? And we will begin with Ms. Thunder.
Well, the roundabout, the roundabouts being designed in Streetscape, I believe, will be less safe. What you, you have a situation where the faster cyclists are in the car lane, or yes, are in the car lane because it's a Cheryl. This is the only lane for the cars. They're sharing it with the bikes while there's a bike lane next to the car lane also. So the faster cyclists will be in the Cheryl lane with cars and the beach cruisers and the families with kids will be on the protected bike lane to the side. When those two lanes approach a roundabout, the be, the faster cyclists and the cars have to merge together to get into the roundabout at the same time. The city says that the faster cyclists can get off at the roundabout at that point, but then they're merging with pedestrians, slower bikes, and kids on bikes and people walking dogs. So I, I think the, the people that are calling it a, oh, I just lost the word, I'm sorry. The, it, it's not a good situation. You're throwing a lot of different modes together in one place.
Thank you. Ms. Blakespear?
You know, I have enough humility to know when I am not the expert. And so when traffic engineers are saying that the studies show that roundabouts are safer and that the accidents that might occur in a roundabout are less severe because you don't have a T-bone type of situation, you have a glance-off type of situation, I believe them. I, I think we have roundabouts working throughout the city, including in Cardiff, on Santa Fe. We also have them on Lucadia Boulevard. We have a third roundabout that needs to be built on Lucadia Boulevard and that's one of our infrastructure projects. And that roundabout, right now, because it's a stop sign, it creates a big traffic backup. But with a roundabout, traffic just continues flowing through it. And I think roundabouts, they, once you get the hang of them, they feel quite comfortable because you're able to keep going. You don't have to stop, especially at night where there's no, there are no other, there's no other cars and you're just sitting there at a light or at a stop sign. There's just no reason to do that. So keeping a low speed that's continuous does move traffic through the corridor at about the same rate in, in Lucadia. And roundabouts are a really important piece of the puzzle. I think we would be served by having more.
Thank you. Okay, we seem to have a lot of interest in this area. Here's another question about public safety. This is a long one. Green posts along bicycle lanes, Lucadia Boulevard is specifically mentioned. An emergency vehicle blares its horn behind your vehicle and you cannot move your car into the bike lane because of the posts. My experience is that there are more emergency vehicles than bicyclists that use that road. What do you suggest is the best way to deal with this? And we will begin with Ms. Blakespear.
Well, I think as a driver, if you are on a one-lane road and you have an emergency vehicle behind you, you wait until it's safe to pull over. So if you can do that in between the green bollards, great. If you can't do that until there is some type of a pullout area. If there are two lanes, you can get into the slower-moving lane. The, the bollards, which are on Lucadia Boulevard and on Highway 101, have, have made those facilities safer for people to make the choice of biking or walking. And, and the reason for that is that most people do not feel comfortable riding next to fifty mile-an-hour traffic. And they certainly don't feel comfortable bringing their kids on it. But when there's a barrier-protected bike lane, it's either protected by the green bollards or protected by parked cars, people feel safer because the driver is not going to crash into them and kill them. And it's that same thing about severity where, where it's very unlikely that somebody who's protected by parked cars is going to get hit by a car. So there, that is actually the way to create more bicycle riders, is to make it actually safer for them and that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Ms. Thunder?
This is the problem with making people feel safer. They're not. And you invite more people, more novice users to a facility because they feel safer, but they're not. Two days ago, I watched a family literally riding three electric bikes down Lucadia Boulevard, thinking they're safe in the green bollards. Mom had a younger child on the back with her. Everybody had helmets, but the younger child was holding on to little handles on the side. She wasn't buckled in or anything. They're, they're, I don't know how old their son was. He was young, was on his own e-bike. Dad was on an e-bike pulling a trailer with all their beach gear on it and they were out for a fun day. And I don't begrudge them that, but they were sailing across the I-5 Bridge on Lucadia Boulevard. They'd just come out of the bollards, they're sailing across the bridge and then they're looking at trying to merge at that first roundabout at the top. I think it's Orpheus? Or the first intersection right there. They were not safe. They were not safe. We're going to have a terrible accident and I'm just dreading that day.
Thank you. Okay, this has to do with the rail crossing. The initial plans for the Verdi Rail Undercrossing and Birmingham Complete Streets projects were presented years ago. Do you agree these improvements are critical and long overdue? How would you prioritize and fund these developments? When do you see each of these getting done? And we will begin with Ms. Thunder.
Well, I think the Verdi Crossing that was promised to Cardiff when they got the rail trail should be prioritized. I think it should come right after the North Lucadia Crossing. North Lucadia has the highest fatalities in their section of railroad tracks and they absolutely, they should have had the very first crossing even before Swammy's or before the one that's going in next. The Birmingham Complete Streets, those folks have waited a long time. They barely have a sidewalk to walk up and down and they, it looks as bad as anywhere else. But if we do Streetscape at fifty-five million, there'll be no money for either of them.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Blakespear?
So those improvements that you mentioned, along with other ones in Cardiff, are, are really important. There are also important needs throughout the city. So we are, as the mayor, you look throughout the city So, we are, as the mayor, you look throughout the city, you represent everybody, and I live in Cardiff, we both live in Cardiff, my opponent and I both live in Cardiff, so we are very familiar with the streets around here. And there's no question that Birmingham needs to have the power lines undergrounded, connected sidewalks, and to have a Streetscape-type of thing happen on that road. But, but we also need that crossing at Verity, and Santa Fe is another road that needs improvement, because there are so many schools along there. So, there are a lot of kids who ride their bikes to school already, and if you think about that, the ages of, like, for example, age 10 to, before you get your license at 16, those kids can all be riding their bikes to school if we build the facilities for them to do that. So, those have been really important priorities for me, looking at Cardiff, and also looking at the entire city, and I want to make all of the city easier for biking and walking.
Thank you. Ms. Thunder? Oh, I'm sorry.
I already answered it.
Going to the next. Okay. The next question. And this is going to be the final question. What best qualifies you to be mayor of Encinitas? And we will begin with Ms. Blakespear.
Well, I think what qualifies me is my proven track record of success. So, I've been the mayor for four years, and before that, I was on the Encinitas City Council for two years. And I have a background as a practicing attorney, and I also worked as a news reporter, and I covered various parts of government. And so, when you look at what I would bring to this job, it's a known quantity. It is resident engagement, it's energy, it is compassion, it's an analytic, data-driven approach, it is trying to reflect the values of the community, and also trying to actually do things, trying to say, let's move our community forward, let's tackle the problems that confront us, whether that's homelessness, or climate change, or needing to have a city that's easier to get around outside of your car. So, all of those community improvement projects reflect on my leadership, and I would bring that same thing to the next two years as mayor.
Thank you. And Ms. Thunder?
Pure and simple empathy. I have empathy for other people who live here. I know what it's like to have a project shoved down your throat, and to watch the process done in a non-transparent, non-fair way. I understand that. So, I'm here to represent the people that want to change that way of government, and I get that. Last I looked, our country is a government of citizens, so I'm entering this race as a citizen that wants to improve what we have here. I don't think it's rocket science. I think it takes someone that can reason things through, and who is good at listening to other people, and can work with other, other groups to find a common solution. I excel at that, and I'm looking forward to doing it for Encinitas.
Thank you. Now, before we conclude our forum, and before we hear the closing statements, I do want to direct you to our website, VotersEdge.org, which is a wonderful online resource for more information about the candidates, the ballot issues, and detailed voter information. And candidates are able to submit their information to have on that website free of charge, and it's a wonderful resource for them also. To learn more about our organization, League of Women Voters, go to my.lwv.org. And finally, I do want to remind you that if you have not yet registered to vote, the deadline to register online is October 19th. It's a very easy process. You just go to the website, sdvote.com, and follow the directions. On that website, you can also sign up to follow your ballot to its destination if you are mailing in your ballot. And with that, now we're going to go to our closing statements. Each of the candidates will have two minutes to sum up their positions, and we are doing the reverse order, so we will begin with candidate Thunder.
Today, state housing policy and the refusal of our mayor to push back threatens the community character we hold so dear. She claims I would throw the city back into noncompliance with the state and bring on more lawsuits, yet she's the one suing the state right now. I will defend the residents to protect home values in all matters regarding housing, and I will speak up for those who need affordable housing. We can do this without sacrificing our town. Remember, my opponent says, quote, "In order to slow down climate change, we must densify the coastline." Do we really need to spoil Encinitas to save the planet? No, we don't. We can demand the developers set aside a higher percentage of their projects for low-income housing. That will get us closer to state requirements much faster. But the mayor, who's supported by developers, refuses to do that. She's received contributions from now nine developers who benefited directly from her reversal of our Measure U vote. Two of the developers donated an additional $9,000 each to a political action committee dedicated to re-electing this mayor and two of her colleagues. This PAC is a classic end run around our $250 limit on individual donations. Ask yourself, why is it so important for developers to keep this mayor in office? Have you ever given that much money to a local campaign? Folks, this is David versus Goliath fight. My opponent has big money behind her, but I have a grassroots movement that has awakened to the truth. And that truth is, it's time for reason and logic to drive our decisions, not ideology and partisan pressure. I'm an independent, and I'm not beholden to any special interests. The only interests I care about are those of the residents of Encinitas. Please vote for change this election by electing Julie Thunder for mayor. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Blakespear, give your closing statement, please.
Yes, thank you. So, thank you for listening tonight. I think my opponent loves to say that developers are donating to my campaign, and I've received more than 800 donations, and I'm really grateful for all the people who support me. And inevitably, there are professions in there that are linked to development, like being an architect, or working for a low-income housing nonprofit. Those things are in the development community. And truthfully, I'm sure my opponent also has those types of donors, especially considering that her family business is in the construction industry. So, everybody who's supporting my campaign, it's doing it legally. They are following the rules. That can't be said of my opponent's campaign, who is supported by a shadow group of Republican political consultants. This is not being properly disclosed on expenditure statements, which by law have to be filed with the city. I want to say that, in the big picture, I have, I've stated it today, but I am trying to protect our community character, comply with state housing laws, and do a good job representing you and all of the different interests that you have in terms of your interests in moving forward with projects in the city. I think there are always ways to say no. It's easy to say no, and you hear, heard that from my opponent tonight on every subject, whether it was Streetscape, or homelessness, or affordable housing, the answer is no. And I would say to you, look at, when someone says they value empathy, look at, empathy is as empathy does. So, opposing affordable housing, opposing homelessness solutions, opposing improvements, is that showing empathy? I offer you, this is, there is a clear difference between us, and, and what I offer you is compassion, transparency, commitment, always working with you to determine what's in the best, best interests of the whole community. I've done a great job doing that in the last four years as your mayor, and I hope that I've earned your vote to continue my job as your Encinitas mayor. Thank you.
And I wish to thank and commend these candidates for their courage and their willingness to run for public office. They are truly making democracy work. Thank you, and good evening.